Good evening. Welcome to the Monrovia City Council for Tuesday, June 5th, 2012. It is the day to vote. So I'm making a little knowledge. If you have not voted yet, it is 7:30 and you have one half hour to get to the polls. Polls close at 8 o'clock. So if you have not voted, please vote in the primary elections this evening. You have a half hour to get to the polls. And we will begin this evening with an invocation by our police chaplain, Terrence Brown, who's not here. Ah, I knew I saw you. Our pastor, Dick Sulliner, will give us our invocation. Thank you.
Father in heaven, what a great community this is. Not just city, but I mean community in every sense of the word. And I thank you for these leaders who are here to serve this great community. And I pray, Father, that tonight, everything that happens, that you would be giving guidance, that you would be honored as we seek to serve this community together. Blessed tonight. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Larry Spicer.
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
May we have roll call, please? We're doing chair rotations there?
Sorry about that. So Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Shevlin.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
Mayor Potem Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Lutz.
Present. Mr. Steele, can we have a report of the closed session, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Prior to the meeting this evening, the council met in closed session regarding the one item of pending litigation that appears on the posted agenda. The council took a report from staff and took no reportable action.
Thank you. We have several presentations this evening, and most of them have to do with our fabulous young people in the city of Monrovia. The first one is a presentation and a certificate of recognition that we would like to give to Amanda Nicole Aguilar. And this is because she was awarded a very prestigious award by our congressman, David Dreyer. She was named, out of all of the people who applied, as the 2012 Youth Volunteer Award. And actually, I think you had to be nominated by somebody. It wasn't that she seeked this out. It was a special thing that she was nominated, I believe, by the Unity Center. And because Amanda, and I want you to tell us a little bit about some of the things you do, Amanda. But we have for you a certificate of recognition. I'm going to ask the council to come down. We can take a great photo of you, and then you tell us what kind of things you do to deserve the award.
Well, I've been volunteering with the Foothill Unity Center for three years. And it started off with one event from a key club that I'm president of. It was a letter carrier food drive. And I've got to meet so many people there, and I wanted to learn more about it. The things I do there on a regular basis is we get food in from the center, from stores like Trader Joe's, Von's, Albertson's. And they come in bags. You know, we have to sort all the food before we give it out to the clients. Sometimes it's messy. Sometimes it's like eggs on the bottom of the bag, and it just ruins all the food. So it's a long process. So we get the food in, we have to sort it, then we box it, then we refrigerate it. And then every day there, we're just getting ready for the next day. So just preparing for the next day. We give out food Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. So it's a lot of work. I don't just work in the warehouse, but I go, I work in the fry, you know, answering phones, cleaning, filing. There's, yeah, I do a lot there. One thing that really stood out in all the applicants was that I was giving back because my family receives services from the Foothill Unity Center. I just realized how a big difference it made in my life. So I wanted to learn more about it and give back and say thank you. So thank you for this.
Thank you. Amanda is very humble. She also is not only a member of the key club at the Monrovia High, but the interact club as well. And it seems anything that goes on at the high school that needs volunteer work, she seems to be front and center from. So we are very proud of you, and we're very excited that you received this award. Congratulations. And next, more young people doing amazing things. We have a volleyball group called the, and I want to get this right, Monrovia Starlings G U 14. Did I get that right? You'll have to explain what the G U means to everybody.
Girls under 14.
Means you're under age 14 and under, right? Okay. And they went to the U.S. Volleyball Junior Championship Awards, and they competed against teams in California, Colorado, Arizona, Nebraska, and Hawaii. This is an 11-member team, and they consist of teens from our Clifton Middle School, Santa Fe Middle School, and Monrovia High. So we want to give you a certificate of recognition too for all the hard work that you've put in for the volleyball in this tournament. And again, we're going to come down and take a photograph with you, and then I think you have a few things to share with us about your competition. So first, congratulations. And we're going to come down and take a photograph with you. And who gets the whole way to the captain? Everybody come on up. Okay, we're going to get real cozy here in a minute.
And I'm Elizabeth Kens.
And we're the co-captains of the Starlings Monrovia Girls Under 14 Volleyball Club, or Team. There are 11 of us on the team, and we have competed against top-level teams from Colorado, Arizona, Texas, and Nebraska. And for this season, we've played in the top gold division in Southern Cal.
We like received an at-large bid for the Junior National Championships held in Columbus, Ohio. And last year, some of the girls on the team went to Georgia and received like a gold medal.
Awesome.
And this is the... We just want to make Monrovia proud, and we will do our best there, and we thank you all for your support.
So when do you actually go to the tournament?
We leave June 28th, and we start playing on the 29th. And then if we keep winning, we will keep playing, and the championship day is on July 3rd.
Okay. Absolutely.
That could be streamed live. Last year, I wasn't there in Atlanta when they won the gold at USA Volleyball, USVBA. I forget the website, but I can put it on the patch. And then you can see the team from Monrovia, which is incredible to go with all the teams nationally. So as a U-12 division, they won the gold. They're back as a U-14 with a slightly different configuration of teammates. And then eight out of 11 girls are from Monrovia schools, and you guys should come see them. I mean, they play hard. Their coach, who's the coach at the high school here, he, it's just amazing for the girls. And so the parents, we were hoping they just, we appreciate you guys taking time to recognize them. The additional thing is each girl has to raise $1,000 to pay for the flight, hotel, and all that. And we know the city can't offer us money, but we did a car wash fundraiser at Pet Boys. They donated some stuff for us. We're going to do a block-long yard sale near Mayflower Elementary School, and we're doing a poker tournament.
And when is that?
June 16th, Saturday, June 16th, on Concord Avenue. There's a block-long yard sale. And you're welcome to donate items. We'll sell those and then put that money towards the team. And then June 23rd, there's a Texas Hold'em Poker Tournament, just for the community, if anybody would want to play. It's just a fun time to hang out. We just really appreciate Monrovia's support and appreciate you guys taking the time to recognize the girls and their efforts. So thank you. Do you want to say anything, Coach?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council members. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Wayne Tain. I am the high school varsity volleyball coach at Monrovia High School. I have taken several of our high-quality players from our middle schools. The idea is to build, to develop a awareness, volleyball awareness in our community, which I think they all deserve. This community is a championship community. We know we have won football championships, and I believe we are looking forward to bringing some volleyball championships into our city. We all, all these girls volunteer their times and extra times. They practice almost four to five days a week, or sometimes seven days a week, in order to build those awareness, to let everybody know in Southern California that Monrovia is a volleyball place to play, to enjoy, and to be part of a community, a volleyball community, just same as Orange County. So the purpose, I was here hired five years ago by Mr. Jackson. We've been very supportive by both, all the schools, the Clifton Schools, the middle school, and the Santa Fe Schools, and the high school, all their principals and all their administration. Athletic Director Bell, Athletic Director Hart, Mr. Hart, has been extremely helpful in allowing us, to support us in terms to make this happen. And I thank you all very, very much. And we will continue to do this for many, many years.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And all that which is, we go with you. Good luck. Good luck. Okay, our last presentation is for our fire department, and our fire chief, Chris Donovan, will be introducing us to some new members of our fire department.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Lutz, members of City Council. Certainly, they haven't won a gold medal yet, but they're on their way to tremendous success with our department. To my immediate left is firefighter/paramedic Joseph Jansen. He just raised his hand there. Joe grew up in Duarte, California, with his mom and dad and six siblings. That's probably why he raises his hand a lot, to get the food from the table. He's a graduate from Bishop Amont High School and earned a Bachelor's of Arts in Sociology from UCLA. Little side note, today, we did the badge pinning, and I was talking to his mom, and she said that when she learned that he wanted to go and become a firefighter, she thought, oh, no, what a waste of all that education at UCLA. But really, what we have found is that the requirements to become entry-level firefighters has really risen, and we're going to take very good care of Joe, but also leverage that education from UCLA and take good care of him in that respect. He then went on and pursued his associate's degree in fire technology from Rio Hondo, and then became a paramedic through the UCLA Daniel Freeman Paramedic Training Institute. Joe's worked in the emergency medical services field for over seven years, and he comes to Monrovia with experience as an auxiliary firefighter with both San Marino Fire Department and the Hermosa Beach Fire Department. Joe has strong ties to the city of Monrovia. He was married in Monrovia at Immaculate Conception Church to his wife of three years, Marcia. And having lived in Duarte, he spent much time in this community. And in addition to that, Joe picked Monrovia to do his field internship as a paramedic out of paramedic school, and certainly was familiar with the area. And we got a chance to become familiar with Joe. Joe and his wife currently reside in Pasadena, where he enjoys playing basketball, hiking, and spending time with the family. And once Joe's off probation, we're going to put him on our basketball team. And next year, we're going to beat the police department.
That's the fire department applauding.
That's darn right. That's right. I threw it out. Chief Hunt? I'm sorry?
We have to wait, why?
Why?
We have to wait for his probation.
For his probation. Can he play basketball in between?
Absolutely. You got it. Okay, to Joe's immediate left is John Claypool. John was born and raised in Redondo Beach, California, by his parents, John and Sharon Claypool, who are still happily married. John also has an older sister, June, whom he's very close with, even though his family currently lives in Arizona. Growing up, John enjoyed playing team sports such as baseball and soccer. His father had a small roofing company where he worked during high school, and then continued working full-time as a roofer after graduation. At the age of 19, John realized that roofing probably was a good job, but there were better things for him. So he moved to San Diego to attend, of all things, the college at the San Diego Golf Academy. He graduated in 1997 with an A. degree in business and started a career as a golf professional. Now, I just learned this a couple of weeks ago, and I have high hopes that my power fade is going to get improved as we move forward here.
What's the handicap?
Apparently, I'm in the age, but in fact, I play a lot of scratch.
So much for my power fade. So John worked as a golf professional for approximately five years in San Diego, and a short time in North Carolina before pursuing his career in the fire service. John's been working in the emergency medical services field for close to 10 years, and he's been a paramedic for seven years. Interestingly, John's worked in two states and in three counties within California. So he brings a tremendous amount of experience with him to the city of Monrovia as a paramedic. And last year, he graduated from firefighter academy locally here, which helped prepare him for the challenging role of a firefighter/paramedic. In his free time, John enjoys spending time outdoors and activities such as hiking, mountain biking, camping, and soon to be working on my power fade.
Well, Joseph and John, we would like to welcome you to the Monrovia family. I'm sure you know you're entering in one of the finest fire departments in the state, and that we have very high expectations for you. And we're so grateful that you've decided to choose to have your career in the city of Monrovia. And all of us here want to say to you, anything we can do for you, all you have to do is ask.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to Monrovia. Well, our next agenda item is our student government representative report. And it's with a heavy heart that we allow this report, because it will be the last report given to us by Kevin Greenwood.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, so we'd like to congratulate, there we go. I'd like to congratulate both our baseball and softball teams. Our softball team made it to the quarterfinals of the divisional playoff series, and our baseball team made it to the semifinals. And of course, congratulations goes out to all the members of that team. This past, it was Tuesday, I believe, we had our SIGI awards, which are Mr. Segal's little drama awards that he does. And it was a great event. We had to say goodbye to Mr. Segal as a drama director at Monrovia High School. Our summer school will be at Santa Fe this year, and it is starting a week from Thursday. And that is because they are spending the last of the Measure M money to paint the school, which I know was kind of the main complaint that people had after the renovation, was that while the new buildings looked great, the old buildings, well, the inside looked great, the outside had not been redone. So now they will be repainting the old buildings and making them look just like the new ones. Our grand night was this past Thursday at Six Flags for the first time, and we had a great time spending all night up there. And we got there at 9:30, we left at 5:30. And that was fun, and I know some people got stuck in line, but it's number one rural theme park, you stay as far to the left as possible. And I did, and I got right in. For all of you who will be attending this Monrovia High School this upcoming year, keep a watch on your school looms, because I already have received many emails from clubs and other organizations that they're having summer fundraisers. So just keep an eye out for anything of any club that will be having a fundraiser this summer, so that we can all come back next year, and everyone will have some money to start with. Because I know that's the biggest problem, is when school starts, everyone's account is zero, and it's nice to have a couple hundred bucks when you start the school year. Our MASA, MASA Science Academy, is very proud to graduate, our first graduating class this year. We started in 2008, and now, of course, it's 2012. And we are the first graduating class, and I don't remember the exact stat Mr. Hernandez gave, but it was about 97% of all of MASA graduates will be attending a post-secondary education this upcoming fall. And our graduation is this Thursday at 7:00, and the gates will open at 5:30. And our student call time, since Mr. Segal's in charge of that, it all has drama vocabulary with it, will be at 6 o'clock in the auditorium. And Mr. Jackson stressed this very much, that there will be 3,040 tickets available. And each student gets eight, and those eight are the only tickets you will get, and the school does not have extra. There will be 3,040 people attending, and that is it. And he sent his message this afternoon, that no strollers will be allowed in, and please make sure that everyone gets all nice and cozy with each other, because that is the capacity for our new stadium. So, and each student gets eight tickets, as I said before, and let's reiterate again, you must have a ticket to attend. And also, each student will be given a program tomorrow. And if we would ask the families who already have a program if they can maybe use that one instead, because they did not order the 3,040 programs. So please, if your student gives you a program tomorrow, please don't get an extra one. That way, every family has a chance to get one. And with that, that concludes my report. I take this opportunity to thank the City Council for allowing me to give presentations this last year. It'll spend nine months, doesn't seem that long ago that I started. I was preparing this report earlier, and as I saved it out of my file, I have my ASB file in City Council, and I was looking over how many reports I had there. It doesn't seem like I spent that many. And it surely just flown by, and I appreciate everything for Mayor Lutz and Councilmember Shevlin coming to my eagle ceremony, and for all of your best wishes through everything and through the college application process. And I hope that whoever takes over next year will do everything as well. And I will come back and visit whenever I can, whatever free time I have from college and working at Disneyland, which will be an hour a week maybe. But I should thank you all again, and I wish everyone the best in the future.
Well, Kevin, we want to thank you for coming and informing all of us and all the residents of what's going on at Monrovia High. You know, Kevin comes to this knowledge because he is also the ASB president at Monrovia High. So he's very in tune to everything that's going on at the school, and you did a great job of sharing that with all of us every single council meeting. We want to express our gratitude to you, and we do have a certificate for you that we would like to present you. So we're going to come down and take a little photo and present you with the certificate. We will miss you very much. And next year, they have big shoes to fill. Ms. Lyle, do we have any changes of the order of business tonight?
No changes this evening, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next is our consent calendar.
I need to abstain on item CC2.
And I do as well.
Can I have a motion for the consent calendar?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries with the two exten, abstentions. You know, that word. Our next item is public comment, and this is a time for anybody who would like to speak to this council about any item which is not on our current agenda. All you need to do is fill out a blue speaker form, and our city clerk will call your name.
Jay Harris.
Thank you. Thank you to the mayor and members of the council. I'm here. I live on North Mountain Avenue between Foothill and Greystone, and I have written to the council through the mayor. I've spoken with the chief of police, with the director of Public Works. I should probably find out who to speak to at Monrovia Transit. There is a huge amount of speeding on Mountain, both north and south during rush hour, and later than that. Sometimes in excess of 50 to 60 miles an hour. Some 10 years ago, a friend of mine was visiting, and his, I'll call it a brand-new car, it was three weeks old, was totaled by a hit-and-run driver who was detained by police. It was discovered that he was driving a stolen vehicle. My partner's car was hit about a year and a half ago by an individual who lives in the area who was driving at about 55 miles an hour. It was around $3,000 damage. I am much more concerned, however, about the possibility of damage to persons rather than property. There are no posted speed limits north of Foothill on Mountain Avenue between Foothill and Greystone. I did some driving before coming to the meeting this evening, and that is, does not appear to me to be in character for the city, where it would appear to me that there are posted speed limit signs every two to four blocks. I did notice that there are speed limits north of Greystone on Norumbega. I did not go all the way to the very end of Norumbega, but the vehicles that I note are coming from that area of the city north of me in the foothills. They not only speed, they do not bother to stop if they are going westbound on Greystone. There is almost never a stop, certainly not even a California rolling stop at Mountain Avenue. It is, I think the council, I hope the council would agree, one of the major streets in the city, and it needs to be better handled. The police department has put up, although it hasn't been turned on yet, an electronic speed notifying sign just north of, well, halfway between Valley View and Mountain View. So that hopefully will be an improvement, but, and I understand, there is only one motorcycle officer. I truly believe there's a great deal of revenue out there. I don't know that that's the best place to get it, but when I'd lived in the city for about a month and a half, I did not see the two in front of the five when I was proceeding north on Shamrock, so I was going 31, and I got a ticket, which I royally deserved. I discussed with the captain of the police department the idea of road bumps or some other means to slow traffic. He mentioned the idea of using the monitors that the one has been put up. He also mentioned the idea of putting, painting the speed limit on the street. Apparently, there are some complaints that come, or more than a few, when any action like that is taken without a full canvas of the neighborhood. But I leave it to the council to work on, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
This is the original, right in there?
Thank you.
Good evening. Dear City Council and Mayor Lutz, anything you have to do is just to ask.
Can I ask, I'm sorry to interrupt, can you please give us your name and your address?
Sure, my name is Michael from one-one-one East Atara Street in the city of Monrovia, our city. Anything you have to do is ask, is what you said to the new fireman. Mayor, we still have not received a response letter after six weeks. I came to you and the City Council on the last meeting, and still you, Mayor of Monrovia, have not written to us nor contacted myself. You have my number and all of our addresses on East Atara. Shocked, not really, because we're all seeing another side to you. Empathy is putting yourself in other people's shoes. This is an important and essential qualification for a person to have in order to sit in a chair as mayor. These letters state true events that have happened. They are not fiction or lies, they are real, and we are the ones that came forward, do exist. We are very discreet, we are a very diverse set neighborhood, families that all get along with one another as it should be. Yet, as we as homeowners, we are cursed with having Councilman Larry Spicer as a neighbor. We know much more about him and his actions in the past. We are only going to mention those which we have witnesses as proof. Five families have had problems being bullied, including a neighbor which has moved, have had had some sort of confrontation, confrontation or incidents with Councilman Larry Spicer. He is like a bad storm, and we have no idea when he will strike again. Since twenty years ago until present day, he not only confronts neighbors throughout our neighborhood, but also confronts neighbors in public. He also targets on residents where loved ones live, and age is never a factor. He is fifty-five-years-old man who is still a bully at his age. And in this era of non-tolerance of bullying and harassment, how can you consider this completely absurd behavior from your own councilman who represents you? He represents you and the city of Monrovia twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and you are embracing him for some reason or condoning his behavior. Resident one, she has three calls placed to her home on the file regarding Councilman Larry Spicer. Terrorist threats placed upon herself and her eleven-year-old and fourteen-year-old goddaughters, granddaughters. Racist white remarks, uses profanity and makes profane finger gestures to family from her granddaughter to her elderly eighty-four-year-old grandmother. What would you do if this happened to you, Mayor Lutz? Regarding resident one. No comment?
Did you wish to continue?
Yes, with your response.
This is when we take input from you.
Resident two, children who used to play on the street were threatened. Female neighbors took shelter at this home due to fear. A client is followed and tailgated to her business for very strange reasons while making profane finger gestures. A client is harassed in his car while being photographed, and clients are being told to take their children elsewhere. Now he's messing around with the business and the income which is involved in this legal daycare. He approached the husband during the street with a stick. Racist comments referring to him as a. I would ask you again what your comments are, what you would do in this house, but that's not acceptable. Resident three, receiving Miss Larry Spicer due to domestic violence on three occasions. Visually witnessing Delphine Spicer get wet with a high-pressure hose, of course, by Larry Spicer. She was upset, crying, and wet. This one, I have no questions for you. Any human being would take in a woman of need. Of course, you'd call nine-one-one as soon as possible, because you know who is out there and cannot put past what he might do. Resident four, confrontations in front yard causing aggravation by washing upon my side twice in a week. Once it was an hour after a sweet sleeper. Minor, but proof of how he begins with a taunting. Illegally cutting our trees, confronting me and intimidating me at a public location in Duarte, having city code enforcement coming out to inspect the overgrown trees, which they said were absolutely fine. He wastes city time and my time. Resident five, illegal wall, racist white comment. Altercation with husband. Mary Larry Spicer sent married prior resident flowers to her place of work. She was scared and floored, had no clue that he knew where she worked. Also, the trip from Monrovia to her employment was nineteen miles away. Our home is supposed to be a safe haven. We are a community where all the neighbors get along except for us with Larry. What does that tell you about Councilman Larry Spicer's character? It's obvious that it is not us. He is a menace, and we are victims of his civil harassment. We are tired of watching everything getting, we are tired of watching everyone getting harassed, then seeing him on your board as city councilman. More and more in this day and age, where individuals as a modern society do not tolerate bullies in schools and in the workplace and in neighborhoods, why should we have to tolerate with your city councilman Larry Spicer in our neighborhood? In conclusion, Mary Anne of Monrovia, you've placed your hand over your heart and recited our pledge of allegiance hundreds of times. May you please recite the last five words of our pledge of allegiance, which you won't, for liberty and justice for all. We ask the residents of Monrovia, we cannot do this alone. We ask you to contact our mayor's city hall with your comments and feedback. Mayor, no one should be harassed by bullies, and you know that. Councilman Larry Spicer does not belong in the city of Monrovia City Council. Best regards to Mary, Mayor, City Councilman, and to all Monrovians. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sally Follett. Hello, everyone. I own two apartment complexes in Monrovia. I'm here about my twenty-one apartments and one-eighteen West Colorado. There's been a lot of construction around the units, and I have, myself, have had to come in not once, not twice, but four times for building and safety, because I'm concerned for my tenants' safety. They have been evacuated twice. They have had a lot and endure a lot of noise and inconvenience, and the only reason the problems have ended, each time I come in with a different problem, is because the project has moved on, not because anything happened. We also talked to the contractor twice. My manager also has come in twice to talk to building and safety. So I'm here representing my tenants and myself. I do feel this building and safety has been very polite, they've been very professional, but I think that for me to come in four times and my manager to have to come in, something is not happening correctly. And I do feel that my tenants are not only inconvenienced, I have, so the ones that are home during the day are elderly, for them to have to be evacuated, for gas lines being hit, which was twice, two different incidences. If I were digging, Southern California has made it, gas has made it very clear, contact them, they do come out very timely, they do it for free, they show you where the lines are, they're marked, and I don't know how this happened two times, that my tenants had to be evacuated because gas lines were hit. But I do feel it is the city's responsibility to take care of these, the contractors, and for us to be told, sorry, I'm nervous, that I didn't have a problem, because every contractor has a five-million-dollar liability insurance. If something bad had happened, it wouldn't fall to me. If someone were injured or the property were damaged, that is not an answer I want to hear. I want to hear that someone is being responsible for the tenants who currently live here and for myself as a property owner. And now that one project has been completed, I, we are still severely impacted by traffic. I put a picture up there. It is a private parking area, but it has a very large sign. It is not posted well from the street. People love to just shoot through my driveway into that parking area, and they also go back out, because it's very difficult to make the right-hand turn, and the right-hand turn, it's not well-marked. I think it's an attractive nuisance for not only Friday night, but for all the people who use that parking area. And we have always had a one-way traffic through there. Now people are coming out of that parking area, going the other direction, and my tenants stepping out of units and out of the laundry. Are not used to looking to the left or expecting cars to come from the left, and I'm afraid someone is going to get hurt. And I think there are solutions that can be made, but I just really feel concerned that new revenue desire, which I understand in building, is fine, but you're doing it at the cost of your older property owners, and you're depreciating my property, and you're not being considerate of the tenants who live here who indirectly do pay the property taxes, and they do shop in this area. So thank you very much, and I don't know, I do have many suggestions that could be done. I don't think it's my tenants' responsibilities to the inconvenience, and I don't feel I should have to bear the cost of correcting this. I have put up a lot of signage. It is not attractive, it certainly doesn't make the area look better, and it's not attractive to prospective tenants. They all, you can see there is a traffic and parking situation going on there. So I do feel it has depreciated the value of my building, and I feel that as a city you need to consider also, we people who have been here a long time and not just new revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other speaker cards. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this council on any item that is not currently on the agenda? You may come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Lutz and members of the City Council. I have a few things to talk about tonight.
Excuse me, please give us your name and your address.
Curtis Thorgerston, seven-twenty-six Monterey Avenue. Recently, I've been looking at all the problems that have been going on, especially the one that worries me the most right now is the European economy, because they say that if it collapses, it will cause a global recession. A while back, I came here and I talked about a plan where we probably could use a strategic plan with, regarding the sanitation districts, where they, we could take the methane gas generated from them and use them to power our generators and industry through a pipeline system. At the time, it sounded okay, but I thought of a more immediate, more effective plan, and that would be to have a series of terminals where that gas could be extracted and then sent by rail to power generation facilities or even by semi-truck, where it could be in a cartridge system. One tank would be used up during the night, and immediately afterward, another one would replace it. And I could see where the goal line in all passenger rail systems could be used after hours, when all the passenger cars are put to bed, let's say, and then after hours, those tanker cars could be used to refuel these power generation stations, and also maybe some types of industry. Now propane tanks are used all the time, and you see propane tanks on rail cars that go through on the railroad system, but you have to pay for that when you take oil out of the ground. Well, I'm thinking to myself, why take oil out of the ground, especially if it could be cut off in the Middle East, when you could use the sewage that we create and where it's basically free, and it's going to be produced no matter what we do? That would be an immediate shot in the arm to the economy, when it could also be done all over the world, where we can lower our demand for fossil fuels. One other thing I learned, I went to the city of Pasadena, and they had a Pasadena twenty-four program, twenty forty, I'm sorry, and that is where every city in the state of California has to, by state law, reduce and reuse their trash by ninety percent by a certain time. And when I was at that meeting, I learned the city of San Francisco has upped the stakes, and they have a zero trash. They have one-hundred percent recycling and reusability of their products. I don't know how it's done, but it's nice to know that different cities act independently as their own laboratories, and they come with ideas back and forth. With these ideas and what I suggested, I think that we should look at another way to approach and bring in more productivity, so that we can up our GMP and then sustain ourselves against any possibility of a further recession or a possible global depression, because we are the last bastion of any economic might on this planet. We can do it. Now, one idea I came up with, and I've been sharing this with different people, is I thought of having a, what I call a charity, or charity and industry meet, and they have a, it'd be like a meet and greet, where they have a, the industries would come and they would tell the charities, well, this is what we produce, and this is what we dispose of. And charities, on the other hand, say, well, this is what we need, and this is what we can use. And if that could be done, then charities could get what they need from certain businesses and industries, and those industries can get a tax write-off. It'd be a perfect swap. And this way, all those extra items that were once disposed of don't have to go into a landfill. And the last thing I want to say is, this is the thing that was my rallying cry when I attended the Pasadena twenty forty in February. They said for every ten thousand tons of garbage that is thrown away into a landfill, it creates one landfill job. For every ten thousand tons of garbage that is reused and recycled, it creates one hundred twenty-five to two hundred and fifty jobs from trash. Now, if you add that into the mix, who knows how far this economy could go up and keep going up? And maybe we could take the rest of the world on the upswing, so we don't have to see things like depressed economies, and then eventually, which leads to pocket wars and civil insurrection, too many things that are too horrible to mention. So it's just a thought for now, and I'll ensure my ideas to the council, and hopefully, if things go well, maybe we can get things with, together with, you know, our elected officials in Sacramento and elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who has anything they would like to say at this time to this council that is not currently on the agenda? Seeing and hearing, and I'll close the public input. And before we move on, Mr. Harris, I'm going to ask that you speak to our police chief, who's in the lobby, Mr. Hunt, and he can fill you in on some of the things that they're working on, because I know they're working on that issue for you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And then Ms. Follett, I don't believe I said that correctly, Follett. I would like you to meet with our Director of Community Development. His name is Steve Seismar. He's in the lobby waiting for you, and he, you can talk to him about some of the issues you've discussed, and he'll be able to work with you on that. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, we do not have any public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to our reports of council members, and I'll begin with Councilmember Adams.
Thank you. Well, these last couple of weeks have been very busy in town, and a lot of things going on, and I have a few things I would like to report on. Last weekend, of course, was Relay for Life. It was a great turnout, a lot of money raised. It was very timely in the recent passing that will be mentioned when we close our meeting of Mike Pollard a little over a week ago, longtime Monrovia resident. Lost way too early in his life, but so, the Relay for Life was a very memorable event, and thanks to everyone that participated. June first, KNX Radio ten seventy was in Monrovia broadcasting. The Business Channel was broadcasting in the afternoon. I had the pleasure of participating in that, and it was interesting to see the community coming out for different shifts with different people virtually all day long over at the Monrovia Coffee Company. That was great. Memorial Day, Mayor Lutz, you did a great job on your presentation there.
Thank you.
It was a wonderful event, great turnout, and I saw many Monrovians at that event. It was wonderful. May twenty-second, the Monrovia Garden Club had their awards ceremony, and there were eight homeowners who were given awards for their gardening efforts. And if you've looked at any of these homes, they do such a tremendous job of helping to beautify Monrovia, and I would like to ask and see if we can get these eight homes and perhaps a picture of their gardening on the city's website honoring them. Phenomenal group of people, very dedicated to not only their own gardens, but keeping the Monrovia looking beautiful, and if we could do that, I think it'd be, I'll get that information over to you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protem Garcia.
Thank you. Two weeks ago, Councilmember Shevlin and myself, along with our staff. Um, two weeks ago, uh, Councilmember Shevlin and myself along with, uh, our staff, which included, uh, Mark Alvarado, Darlene Sanchez, Jennifer McLean, and Dan Bell, joined 10,000 other developers, cities, tenants, and brokers at the International Conference of Shopping Centers in Las Vegas. Uh, we shared a booth with the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership, uh, which was a cost savings measure, but also a way to promote our San Gabriel Valley region as a whole. In the past, ICSC has been a valuable tool to the city and this year was no different. We were able to build on relationships, old relationships, develop new ones, also to get some status updates on some of the pending projects in our city. These included a status on projects at the Huntington Oaks Shopping Center, the Foothill Park Plaza, and the newly vacant Blockbuster site. During our time there, we met with 15 different brokers, all within a 48-hour period, so it's kind of a whirlwind, uh, session there. Brokers, retailers, and developers. And all of us walked away, uh, not only with a feeling of encouragement, but also what we heard was that people want to come to Monrovia. They love our downtown, uh, they want to move their business to Huntington Drive and that Monrovia is business-friendly. All in all, I'm happy to report that despite all of the uncertainty that you hear that's caused by the elimination of redevelopment, ICSC was a reassuring testament that Monrovia is going to continue to have a competitive advantage over other cities and that our economic appeal, uh, to potential developers, tenants, and brokers will remain strong. And you will be seeing the fruits of our labor, hopefully, over the coming 12 to 18 months when you start seeing some hopefully new businesses, many of which you all have asked for in, uh, our community to come to Monrovia, uh, start to open their doors here in town. We're very excited about the, about the results and I hope to report, uh, some more progress of that as our staff continues to engage, uh, with these various retailers in the future. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Shevlin.
Thank you. Uh, I did want to start off by saying congratulations to all the graduates out there and to the families that, uh, support them. So, I know that, uh, graduating from, at any level, there's a lot of work and support involved. Um, I have several things to, uh, this evening. Um, I wanted to point out that, uh, in the LA County's wisdom for whatever, they're on a Thursday, our, uh, Monrovia Fire, partnering with the LA County EMS Agency, will conduct a public education program, Sidewalk CPR. And there'll be a station at, they'll have something set up in front of the library in Old Town. So, that will be from 9 until noon. So, please check that out and you'll be able to learn, uh, the new, uh, CPR techniques. So, check that out again Thursday from 9 till noon. Kind of a strange time. I don't know why they didn't do it on Saturday, but this Thursday from, uh, 9 until noon. And obviously, school is out and there's lots of extra time, uh, for the kids to keep them occupied. The library has absolutely fantastic programming during the summer. Check it out on our website. And, um, we have everything from, well, there's the Summer Reading Club and that begins, uh, Monday, June 11th and goes through, uh, August 4th. So, please check that out at the library. There are Monday movie nights and these are free events, summer dinner theater, and we even have a Paul Bunyan Day, Saturday, June 16th, uh, 2:00 PM, 2:00 to 3:00 PM in the community room. That's all at the library, but go online, check out all the activities that are going on in the, um, library. And the library is also starting a, uh, they're developing a volunteer storytime program. So, if you're interested in reading to kids, please, uh, contact the, uh, library and find out how you can become a volunteer to, um, read to our youth in our community. Um, and talking about volunteering, that's kind of segueing into my item here. Uh, periodically, over the last couple of years, we've been trying to have cleanup days while I've talked to staff about having yet, uh, another one. And this is a special cleanup day because, uh, I enlisted the help of both the Quanis and the Rotary Clubs and a race to clean up Monrovia. And we've got a couple of, of projects we're going to concentrate in Recreation Park and then also in the Downtown and Library Park, picking up trash debris, uh, some light weeding, just to spruce everything up, make it look, uh, nice and pretty and just underscore, uh, volunteerism, what we can do to help, um, our city in many, many, uh, different ways. Uh, but that will be on Saturday, June 23rd, from 8:00 AM to 11:00. And, um, there will be, there are flyers available and I'll see about having that maybe posted on the, uh, website. But talking about, and if you want to know anything more about the, the cleanup, uh, it's not just the Quanis Club in, in.
Anybody can.
Anybody can come. Uh, uh, we've got youth groups, YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, MAP Area Partnership. So, uh, lots of people can come and get involved in doing that. So, let me know and you can contact me on my cell number, 253-0072. Uh, so, please let me know about that. And about volunteering, on our, our website, and I just talked to staff tonight, that we can put on our face page under the main menu, right now, you can get to the volunteering opportunities, but it's a, a little challenging. You have to go through several steps. So, we'll have that link right on our main menu, uh, along with the city job listings. So, you can go to city job listings, it'll take it, but not everybody thinks of a job listing as also a volunteer opportunity. So, we're going to direct you so that you know all the many ways that you can help Monrovia out. We're in our, um, our special budget study session and it was pointed out just how much volunteerism helps, uh, Monrovia. Lots of areas, the library, Canyon Park, and many others. So, um, again, congratulations to our graduates. Have a great start of summer and come out and help clean up Monrovia on June 23rd from 8:00 to 11:00 AM. It'll be worth your while. You can get nice and dirty, but make things look really nice and clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spicer.
Uh, yes, Mayor. Um, I'd also like to piggyback on Becky and, I mean, Councilwoman Shevlin in regards to, um, congratulating, uh, graduates from, um, the high school, junior high school, elementary school. Also, I'll be receiving my associates in, um, Applied Business Management.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you. Also, um, during my reporting period, I would like to, um, ask Dan and Heather Greer to come up and give us a quick, um, overview of the upcoming Neighborhood Map Conference.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Heather Greer, here with Dan McConnell from Monrovia's Neighborhood Services Division and representing the great partnership of community leaders that we call the Monrovia Area Partnership. We're here tonight to formally invite council and the entire community to the MAP Neighborhood Conference themed Growing Together. This conference will be held on Saturday, August 11th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Monrovia's Community Services Center. If you're a volunteer, if you're a business owner, a club member, a community partner, a parent, a board member, a neighborhood leader, or you're feeling somewhere in between, this conference is really for you. The MAP Neighborhood Conference is an opportunity for all of us together to participate in activities and workshops that excite us, inspire us, sharpen our skills, explore community resources, and help develop practices and partnerships to make us all effective leaders in the community. Due to our generous sponsors, participants are invited to this conference free of charge. At that great price, participants will enjoy breakfast, three workshops, lunch, an ice cream social, access to local resources through information tables, networking opportunities, raffle prizes, really great company, and our hope is that each participant will leave with new energy and ideas for their prospective neighborhoods, agencies, clubs, and communities.
Good evening, Mayor Lutz and members of the City Council. To continue on, participants will be invited to attend three sessions, each having four different workshops to choose from. The topics, they will include public safety, neighborhood empowerment, character development, and technology for our neighborhoods. The Monrovia Area Partnership 2011 neighborhood, or 2012 Neighborhood Conference is seeking to engage our community one household at a time. This year's MAP Neighborhood Conference has limited seating and requires pre-registration. If you are interested, now is the time to register and secure your space. Conference flyers, like this one, and registration forms are available at the City Hall Reception Desk, at the Community Center, at the Building and Safety Counter, and electronically by visiting the city's website at cityofmonrovia.org. You can also request information by emailing us at map@ci.monrovia.ca.us. The MAP Conference has something for everyone and it only comes once a year. Don't miss your chance. Return your registration to Neighborhood Services at City Hall today so we can all continue growing together. Thank you.
The only thing I have is that I, this doesn't happen until August 11th, so we have plenty of time for you to come and tell us all about it again and again and again so we can make sure everybody knows about it.
You will see it everywhere. It will be in the Waterville. It will be on a banner across Myrtle. Like Dan said, you'll find registration forms pretty much all over town. Um, all of our friendly partners in Old Town will have it and, um, we're, we're really looking forward to it.
And I understand you'll also have a Leadership Academy again in September, followed by a Youth Academy, uh, a Youth Leadership Academy in the spring.
Correct.
That is correct.
All right.
We want to be busy.
Yes, that's for sure.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Dan, Heather, and the Community Services Department. Development Department.
Anything else, Mr. Spicer?
No, ma'am. That, that concludes my report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, this evening for my report, Mr. Adams went through, uh, very well handled, all the events in, in the city of Monrovia, but I realized it has been since Monrovia Day, this is our first council meeting back since Monrovia Day, which is about three weeks ago. So, I want to thank the Monrovia Day Association and our entire city staff that worked so hard to put on a great event. We had a wonderful Fountain to the Falls Run Walk and the runners were under, or they're 41 minutes, I think, was the, the fastest runner up that hill to the fountain and back. Amazing, amazing. And, um, Old Town merchants did a fabulous job of having events all day long in Old Town and, and business was bustling and this city was just overflowing with people. So, we want to congratulate everybody who came and participated in Monrovia Day and particularly, uh, we want to thank all of the people who were there, volunteers and city staff, to make this a very special birthday celebration for Monrovia. So, thank you very much. Um, I have updated our city council on, um, on something that I'm going to share with you. As the city's representative to the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, every year, the Council of Governments reviews its budget, much like we're doing here at the city of Monrovia at this time, and they review their past goals and where they're going in the future goals. And so, I've, I've given all of our council members a copy of the report from the Council of Governments, but I want to, um, give you an update of a couple of things that happened at the last meeting. The first thing that happened was the Council of Governments, um, approves board members and committee members to another organization called the Southern California Association of Governments. And it's association that works with all of the city councils and all of the, uh, all of the county governments from Santa Barbara all the way down to the border of Mexico and, except it carves out a little bit of San Diego. It's a huge organization and it's a really important thing to be part of this organization and have our, have a seat at the table. And, uh, Councilmember Shevlin was appointed to their Housing and Economic Development Committee. And this is very important because she'll be able to speak with other council members and county representatives about economic development throughout all of our cities and housing, affordable housing and low and moderate housing and just housing in general. So, we congratulate Councilmember Shevlin for being appointed to that committee. And also at this meeting, I was previously the second Vice President of this organization and I was a, voted to the first Vice President of this organization. So, I will continue to be very active in the Council of Governments and will give you any updates about things that are, are happening with regard to them as we move forward. And I would like to report that next week, I will be attending the U.S. Conference of Mayors Conference, which is in Orlando, Florida. And, uh, this is a conference that I attend every year and I am the Vice Chair of the Women Mayors Group. And, uh, some of the economic topics that we'll be talking about is the economics of, um, of our, all of our cities and how do we relate to the other countries? And how can we have business with other countries? And how can we, uh, help our businesses in our cities? And these are mayors from all over the country, talking about how can we help businesses in our country do business with other countries? And that's one of the big topics that we'll be talking about. We also talk about education and how municipalities and cities can help the school boards to be, to help, to be able to educate all of our children and so that we move forward with that and into higher education as well. So, I'm looking forward to this conference and those are just a couple of many, many, many topics that will be discussed and I, of course, will bring a report back to you on, um, the information that I gather from this association and this, uh, conference next week. And that concludes my report. Um, next, we have an administrative report. This is the Economic Development Action Plan status and the Successor Agent, uh, Agency Disillusion update. And that will be, um, I think it's going to be a tag team a little bit, but it'll be, uh, Darlene Sanchez, our Senior Project Manager.
Good evening, Mayor Lutz and council members. It feels like it's been much longer than four months since the Redevelopment Agency was eliminated on February 1st of this year. Uh, what I'm here to do tonight is bring you up to date on where we've, what we've been doing over the last few months, as well as describe what we plan to be doing over the next year. The elimination of redevelopment agencies has really brought on a new set of rules, an array of acronyms, new titles, new bureaucracy, and it makes describing our role as successor agency sometimes very confusing. Um, people knew what, what redevelopment was. They looked at our beautiful Old Town. Um, they would look at our successful West Huntington Drive or our innovative East Huntington Drive. And you could see the tangible effects of how redevelopment improved Monrovia. The Redevelopment Agency has been a major contributor to not only the physical improvements of this city, but a major tool in helping the economic growth of Monrovia. Yet, economic development does not end in Monrovia because redevelopment is gone. In fact, in losing the tool of redevelopment, the role of economic development has become much more important than ever before. Uh, to give a little bit of context to this new world without redevelopment, for the folks at home and in our audience, I wanted to provide a brief overview of how redevelopment worked in the past. The Monrovia Redevelopment Agency was created in 1969 under California redevelopment law. This law enabled a local government to form a community development agency charged with improving and rehabbing blight and blighting influences within an area identified as our redevelopment project area. After designating an area as blighted, agencies could acquire land, they could sell or lease property, clear property, construct infrastructure, and undertake improvements in designated project areas, all in an earnest effort to improve the areas that needed it the most. Monrovia's history over the last 40 years is a story of many redevelopment successes, remaking a community that was down and out in the 1960s and transforming it to the Monrovia you see today. Our redevelopment project area covered approximately 30% of the city, con- the city, concentrating its efforts on East Huntington, West Huntington, Foothill Boulevard, Old Town, and Station Square Transit Village. So how was all of this funded? The efforts were funded through tax increment financing, which froze the base here of the project area and allowed all new money to flow back into the area to continue to reinvest in the area. Agencies would insure bonds that would help refinance, excuse me, would help finance the redevelopment activities, then use a tax increment to pay the debt service on these bonds. Another responsibility of the agency was to provide financial support through pass-through payments to our local taxing entities like MUSD and Citrus College. In Monrovia, nearly 30% of our tax increment went to our local taxing entities. Under the new structure, the county is supposed to now provide this payment. In addition to pass-through payments, another 20% of the agency's tax increment was diverted to affordable housing programs. This is important in Monrovia. We use these funds to transform neighborhoods through our MAP program, as well as provide hundreds of affordable housing opportunities for Monrovia families. As part of the new law, housing assets and funds are separated out from the successor agency, and were transferred to our local housing authority that were able to maintain more local control. So you can see why it was very upsetting to lose this tool. It was a tool that allowed us to assemble property, underwrite projects to spark the right kind of development, issue bonds, and keep local money local. Yet, in the end, it was a funding source, and unfortunately, and this is what we have learned to expect when dealing with the state of California. In summarizing our new world, as the successor agency and the city, we have two main roles, unwinding the former redevelopment agency's affairs, and the continued tenacious promotion of economic development. As the Monrovia City Council, you also act as the governing board to the successor agency. Unlike your former role as the redevelopment agency board, your new role is to unwind affairs of the agency, which consists of making sure bills are paid and ensure existing contracts are carried out. As a successor agency, we put a list of all the redevelopment expenditures, or what's referred to as enforceable obligations, and we are only allowed to pay the bills that are included on this list. We provide this list to the county, who will send us money to cover these bills. Any money left over, that would be left over, that would usually be part of tax increment, and would have normally gone to Monrovia, is now retained by the county auditor controller's office. And here's where the added bureaucracy comes in. The Oversight Board role is to supervise all actions of the successor agency. In this chart, you can see the structure. The redevelopment agency was dissolved, leaving the successor agency to make payments, dispose of assets, and seek approval for all of its actions from this Oversight Board. The Oversight Board must approve the successor agency's list of bills, and also has the ability to direct the agency to sell assets that are not part of contracts, and direct the agency to end contracts they believe are not enforceable. After that, the State Department of Finance has the authority to review any Oversight Board action, and can kick back anything they do not agree with. So far, the Oversight Board has held two meetings. The board consists of seven members, two members appointed by the county, two appointed by our mayor, one from MUSD, one from Citrus College, and one from the county flood control. The Oversight Board has reviewed and approved the successor agency's list of bills. And last week, we did receive confirmation from the State Department of Finance that they've also approved our bills. Also, as part of the Oversight Board's last meeting, a list of agency assets were also presented. To date, the agency holds 27 properties, and luckily for us, all are part of an existing contract or currently used for governmental purposes. So that would be certain parking lots, there's some easement agreements that the former redevelopment agency held. So as part of our wind-down efforts, we're working to carry out the existing two contracts we have here with Station Square. We have Station Square Transit Village, and another contract with 820 South Magnolia that is in some way related to Station Square. But that still leaves a number of specific economic development priorities that must still be met. These priorities were either targeted strategic areas, or part of ongoing negotiations with private properties in an effort to develop a site. But they were not yet part of a contract when redevelopment ended. Although these projects were not part of a contract, this does not mean these projects have been dropped. In fact, our need to promote and sell Monrovia, and foster these relationships with the private market, to get these projects to the next level is more critical than ever. So how do we make the transition from our classic idea of redevelopment to the next generation of economic development? We do it by utilizing our existing resources. We are already ahead of the game in our award-winning Economic Development Action Plan. In a time where cities are in the same dilemma with the loss of redevelopment, and some cities are just putting together a development strategy, we already have our economic development toolbox stocked and ready to assist us with our three main goals of attracting, retaining, and growing businesses in Monrovia. Since council adopted the plan, staff has hit the ground running. One of the first steps was to implement the Online Business Resource Center, and to create the Business Blog, which is a free marketing opportunity for businesses. We have received 10,000 hits alone on the homepage of the Business Resource Center. And this lets people know how to start and grow their business in Monrovia. The Business Blog has also received 21,000 hits since its creation in July. We've also begun monitoring economic indicators, including tracking vacancy rates, the number of jobs created, and number of businesses assisted. Additionally, we focused efforts on developing staff, and capitalizing on our existing City Hall resources through our project coordinator position on our business empowerment and strengthening team. Through those two efforts in particular, it speaks to utilizing the resources we already have. In fact, in our business improvement, excuse me, our business empowerment and strengthening team, we pooled city resources and have streamlined our marketing packets to describe the many resources already available through different departments. For example, in our budget study session earlier today, we, FIRE, talked about how they offer disaster preparedness to the Public Works, and also Public Works does a business recycling program. Those are things that we realize we already do, we just need to package them and market them to the businesses here. It was a culmination of these activities that ultimately resulted in Monrovia being named the most business-friendly city in Los Angeles County. Moving forward, we will continue to build on this momentum by focusing on efforts enhancing business attraction, retention, and growth efforts. For example, we are launching our Business Visitation Program, where the goal is to strengthen Monrovia City Council and city staff relationships with our business community, so that we can effectively pair them with the resources and ultimately keep, and perhaps grow, their operations within Monrovia. We are also continuing our tradition of a CEO and brokers roundtable, where we will discuss issues that are most important to those businesses. In our fill-up Old Town campaign, we are currently in the data collection process. This includes business satisfaction, and parking surveys of merchants, and interviews with Old Town businesses. We're also interviewing landlords, businesses that have left Old Town, as well as other stakeholders. This process will help staff get a better understanding of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that are currently in Old Town. Our findings will be presented to Motab on June 12th, and then we'll bring those back to council at a subsequent meeting. Other programs include continuing to develop and enhance our business attraction and marketing strategy, which includes the ICSC Conference that Mayor Protem discussed earlier today, Mayor Protem Garcia discussed earlier today, and developing a more comprehensive job development program. As we look ahead, it's more important than ever to build and maintain our relationships with our current businesses, our future businesses, and our broker community. Fostering these relationships will be a key component as we carry out our Economic Development Action Plan, so that we are continuing to attract, retain, and grow our business community. That concludes my report, and I can answer any questions you might have.
Questions of staff?
Not a question. One of the slides, just a couple before that, you also mentioned job development.
Yes.
And we are hosting a, I meant to do it under my report, and I failed, I'm sorry, the Best Jobs Magazine Job Fair, Get Back to Work Now, and that will be on June 19th, that's Tuesday, on a Tuesday, from, what's the time on there? Oh, from 9:30 AM to 2:00 PM, and that's at the Monrovia Community Center. And if you need to get information about that, call (303) 6601. Again, job fair on June 19th.
Thank you for that plug, we appreciate it.
Any other questions of staff? Well, thank you very much. I think as we move forward without redevelopment, knowing that we have a plan in place, and that we are going to move forward with this plan, and we're not going to let, you know, anything stop us, and we will do what Monrovia does, which is move forward and move aggressively forward, it's very good to hear. And I think what you've presented us is a plan that we can do. And I'm hopeful that we will continue in the mode we have, even though we won't have some of those other tools. We'll just use the tools we can find, and we'll find new ones as we go.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. For this item, we need a motion to receive and file the report.
Make a motion to receive and file the report.
I'll say it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This motion carries. This concludes our meeting this evening. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, June 19th, in these chambers at 7:30. This evening, however, when we close, we will be closing, and I have to say, this is, we're closing with people who have very close ties in this community, and very close ties to the community members. Three people have left us from our city this last week, and one of them is Ricky Martin. Ricky was a high school mathematics teacher at Monrovia High, and through all the years of working with the Rotary Club and interviewing candidates for scholarships, one of the questions we asked them is, did they have a favorite teacher? And Mr. Martin's name would come up very frequently. So we wish his family well, and we certainly honor Mr. Ricky Martin. Also, as Mr. Adams had indicated earlier, another longtime, I believe he lived in Monrovia his whole life, friend of Monrovia, member of the Rotary Club, a member of the high school alumni, Mr. Mike Pollard, passed away from a very short battle with cancer. And Mike is an extended member of the city of Monrovia, in that his business provided the, and still does provide, our internet systems, and some of our processes there. So Mike will be missed by all of us here, and we wish his family the best at this time. And then finally, a loss that just came to us in the very early morning hours this morning, Mr. Don Yost. And Mr. Yost, again, was a longtime member of Monrovia, born and raised here, lived here his whole life, ran with his brother and his father a family printing business in Monrovia, was a dedicated member of the Kiwanis Club, and a friend to all of us. And one of the things that I think is probably less known about Don, but had made an impression upon me, is we have, from time to time, had citizens who needed help with their home situations. Many of you may watch the TV show about hoarders and things like that. And Don had a special talent in working with some of these troubled residents in our city, and he helped us, and he helped those people live through and find solutions to that illness of hoarding. And so Don was a very caring man, and he will be missed as well, and we wish his family the best through this. Three very important people to our community that we've lost in the last couple of weeks, and we close in their honor and in their memory. We are adjourned.